Give thanks for literacy. Literacy means a life of increased safety, achievements, and community participation. For more than 50 years, Mid-State Literacy Council has empowered thousands of residents with literacy skills, improving their families' lives. Literacy builds our community. Help us celebrate literacy and support Mid-State Literacy Council by volunteering or donating to our Give Thanks for Literacy campaign.
You're watching CNET, Center County's government and educational access network.
I'd like to call this October 8, 2025 Patent Board Township, Patent Township Board of Supervisors meeting to order if we could all stand for the saying of our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all right. I would like to welcome everyone here, especially the Patent Township, again, as we like to call a place for all. As we move forward, are there any announcements or additions to the posted agenda? Seeing none. If there is anyone in person or remote, taxpayers, individuals who would like to speak to the board on a particular issue, we are opening that up now. We kindly ask if there is any issues related to items that will be discussed that you wait until that time that we get to it. So, any public comments?
Can we have an issue we want to speak about?
Okay.
Is this for time?
Any, yep.
You would need to come to the microphone, please.
Just come to the mic.
Sorry.
Do you have?
You're good.
If there's mobility issues, can we just give a... If you can, just state your name and township that you're...
So we'll have you go over there and you can stand.
Yeah, why don't you stand by her?
You just stand with Gail.
My name's Gail Hoover. I live in Patent Township.
And I, Barbara Glennon, I live in Patent Township, resident. We are here because we have concerns about the short-term rentals in our neighborhood. We reside in a residential neighborhood, and I just have a question of what status is given to the short-term rental? Are they also residential?
So the short-term rentals are technically yes. They are residential houses, just like a long-term rental.
They're also residential like us?
Correct. They're in our residential zoning district.
Okay, well, we currently have three short-term rentals and one home on Longburn that backs up to the home on Stone ledge. And we have a great mix in our neighborhood of younger and older families, and we love where we live. With the addition of short-term rentals, we have a number of people coming in the neighborhood who are totally unknown. The rentals are purchased from buyers from Virginia, Texas, Philadelphia, and Pittsburgh, PA. The homes are large with four-plus bedrooms and accommodate as many as four to six cars that require off-street parking. They appear to act as small hotels in our neighborhood. We are here to request your consideration adding a residential requirement to any new short-term rentals. We are not opposed to homeowners renting their homes on busy weekends if they reside on the property. Thank you.
Well, my concern is that if you look at the map that I gave you, the pink shows where the rentals are. There's one that has, when I looked on Google Maps, it says it's Orchard Lane Luxury Properties, which sounds like a business, not a home. The atmosphere of our neighborhood is dramatically changed by these short-term rentals because there are so many. And then there's a house, if you see the two pink ones that are close together and there's a house circled in green, that house will be up for sale in the next year or two, and I'm the one sandwiched in between. So you can see my concern. I, you know, I've got short-term rentals surrounding me. So that's why we're here, because short-term rentals have just been popping up like gophers, and it's gotta stop somewhere.
So, Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I can give you an update kind of on what we're doing with the short-term rentals, because we're in the middle of kind of a two-phase approach. So the first phase, and I understand, we hear from a lot of residents in neighborhoods all across the township that are affected by short-term rentals, and I understand it's a very big concern, and please understand that I share your concern. So what the board did over the summer is they changed our rental housing permit requirement. Before, you could rent up to 30 days consecutively without having a rental housing permit. We dropped that to one day. So every rental in the township, short or long, has to have a rental housing permit. In addition, we've turned on the nuisance points. So I know on Stone ledge, this particular street, we've had issues with two short-term rentals out there, and we've been chasing down property owners to address concerns with parking, to address concerns with a trash bag, trash can being left out for a week after the trash was collected, to address some other noise concerns and things. So with the nuisance points, we can issue points against the rental housing permit for every violation, which is why it is critically important that residents call our non-emergency number and report issues on the weekend when they're happening to our police department so the police can go out and they can investigate and pull a violation if necessary. We use that violation to assess the points. When you get five points, you have to come in and put forth a corrective action plan with the township. When you get 10 points, we suspend your rental housing permit. This is phase one. So we said when the board approved the changes to the ordinance back over the summer, we told the residents that were here and the property owners that were here that we would reevaluate what was going on with short-term rentals in June of 2026. So we have been documenting the amount of short-term rentals that we have, or actually have money in our budget in 2026 to contract with a software company that believes we have 350 short-term rentals in the township, which is a lot of short-term rentals. We have 6,000 residential properties in the township. So we're gonna contract with this company to go out and try to find all of these properties. They'll actually, they mine, they use AI, they send out the documentation, they let them know they have to have a permit. If you don't get a permit, you automatically assess five points onto that property, which puts them into the corrective action phase. In June, we're gonna sit down with the Board of Supervisors and discuss the issues we're having. Right now, I can tell you those issues relate to the occupancy, because there are folks that are cramming 14 people into a short-term rental. That's not appropriate. Anything over 11 in Pennsylvania is classified as a hotel. So that's something we're gonna wanna discuss. We're also gonna discuss the parking. We had an issue two weekends ago when there was the big home game, where people were parked all over a private road, on sidewalks, on green spaces, wouldn't move cars, started fighting with each other. The police had to go out and issue warnings. So we're aware that those are the two biggest concerns. And then the third concern, and this came up when the Center Region is working on our comprehensive plan, right now, Patent Township, again, we have a little bit over 6,000 residents, we're in a 50-50 mix, 50% owner occupied, 50% rental housing. That's not ideal in any community, in any place, in Pennsylvania or in the country. So we need to look at our regulations and see what we wanna do moving forward. I know our colleagues in Harris Township are getting ready to adopt an ordinance, and they're banning short-term rentals out of all of their residential zoning districts. Now, they're being sued by the people that own the short-term rentals that don't live in them. So that's some stuff we're gonna have to weigh. The state of Pennsylvania did a study, the Center for Rural PA and the Senate Local Government Commission both did studies. Short-term rentals are huge business in Pennsylvania. It's like a $300 million business. It's an $88 million business within the State College region, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't, and we still have the ability to regulate these. And the state is considering introducing legislation that would regulate them as a hotel, which is what the non-owner occupied short-term rentals really are. They become a hotel. So we share all of your concerns. We're trying very hard to gather the data that we can put together, because what the supervisors heard, and we talked about this for months, I mean, for months, and what we heard from the folks who own these is, "You don't have any data. You don't know how many you have. You don't know this." So we're putting all the pieces in place, so in June, the supervisors can look at the data that we have and can make some decisions, and we can make some recommendations to them on what we think we need to do. We absolutely have to protect the integrity of our residential zoning districts. I believe that to the core of my person, that we must protect those residential zoning districts. And then looking at the mix of housing that we have right now, we have to do something to encourage more owner occupied housing within the township. So please, 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 call the non-emergency number. I know we've talked with some other folks. There's problems across the township with this, and some folks say, "Well, we don't wanna bother you on a game weekend." No, pick up the phone. The police chief will tell you this right now. We have officers who are assigned to the station. They are not all up dealing with Penn State football. They are here to help you 24 hours a day, seven days a week, even if it's the biggest football game of the year. So please, call the police. These, all, all these property owners are required to have a person that's in charge that's local. We follow up with all of them. Every complaint we get, Nicole follows up, our zoning officer. So we are very committed to working on this. We're very committed to protecting our residential neighborhoods. And so I just want you to know that we are listening, we are tracking these. I give the supervisors an update every month in my manager's report of the issues we're dealing with, the number of permits that we've gotten. We're excited to get this new software onboard. It's what College and Ferguson and State College use. And again, they think there's 350 of these in the township. So we're excited to get this onboard and continue to go out and try to address these concerns.
Mr. Chair?
I'll get to you. Would you like to come and address the board?
I'd like to just have a little more of that. I'm gonna go over this.
Okay. And just saying your name and township.
My name is Terry Hoover. That was my wife that spoke earlier. One thing I've been observing, I walk a dog four times a day on that street. If you're familiar with Stone ledge, it's not a big street. It's sort of a fish hook. Every football weekend, what you're gonna see on three of the ones that are presently on our street, you'll see cars parked, some of them would be parked blocking the sidewalk, right on the sidewalk. Some of them will have up to like six, seven cars parked in and out of the driveway, and some of them, the one on top of the hill, there's been some problems, which I know you had reported to you. My concern is, what's that going to put a burden on our police for this? I mean, if we're calling, oh, I could call every weekend this happens, just on a violation for parking, blocking the sidewalk completely, trash, for example, that's not taken out, it's left and it's blowing into other people's yards. That's the type of stuff that's been going on since this started. Now, the one down the street, two houses down, has been there probably for three, four years.
Right.
Yeah, that's the one where you see the most cars parked until the one on the top of the hill. Now it seems to have every bit the same situation.
The one down the street, we've talked with that person quite a bit, and he has a local property manager, and we've talked with him quite a bit. But again, I go back to, and the chief is right here, you're not overburdening the police department to come out and investigate these issues. You are not. And the trash issue needs to be reported to us so we can get it through to the Center Region COG, because they handle the trash contract for us.
Well, one thing perhaps, if you could, is just to have an officer just drive up that street on a football weekend, and you'll see it. It's there. Now, you've got other problems on a football weekend, which we're all familiar with, but that happens every time there's a football game or there's some other major sporting event going on at Penn State. But it's, yeah, it's a concern for us, since we've lived in that house for over 30 years, to see this starting, and as my wife pointed out, our neighbor who's about to move, that would maybe another one right next to us, so we could have our house, the one up the street and two down, all Airbnbs within a year. I'm glad our kids are raised, because the kids across the street, the family with young kids, I've seen some stuff on the back of some of these vehicles and trucks I've seen operating out of these places, businesses with vulgar disgusting language. One of them was from Texas, another one was from California, and they were in that unit two houses down.
Yes.
That's our concern.
And like I said, we've talked with that gentleman, and we've talked with his property. There was another one a couple doors up from him that we had another issue with. We talked with them, they drove up from, allegedly from where they live, they don't live in town, and apologized to their immediate neighbors for the issues that they had had.
Yes. Well, thank you for your efforts. I would have to put this on speed dial every weekend when there's a football game, you know, with the police department.
But honestly, we need you to do that so we can assess the points. We're not gonna be able to get anywhere if we can't assess the points, because if we take away a rental housing permit, that takes away their ability to make money on the rental housing. So that helps us in the end. So please, again...
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I'll certainly let the officers know, you know, generally, like Amy said, every weekend, we have officers assigned to the township. We don't send everybody up to the Penn State games. We obviously need to cover our area as well. So I will let them, let them know to try to patrol that area, but certainly, if you see an issue, please do not hesitate to call. You know, that way we know an officer will come and be able to address it. Certainly, we are busy on home game weekends, so yeah, that is not a secret at all, but certain, don't hesitate to call, because we will, an officer, when they are available, will come out and address the issue. And that way, we can document it as well in our records management system, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Super... Yep. State your name and township, please.
I am Matt Beisel. I live in Patent Township. So I wanted to see about statistics. I know, Amy, you mentioned that a new program was coming out, or we were looking into starting a new program. Do we have any statistics on the number of calls to police, number of calls to township regarding...
I could pull those for you. I don't have them on me. I do include, Nicole does, our zoning officer, an update on how many short-term rental permits we're getting every month. Last month, we were up to 21, which is a drop in the bucket compared to potentially 350, but we can certainly pull the information on the number of calls.
That was another question. I wanted to see the velocity that we're seeing with the new applications for, for short-term rentals. In addition, I wanted to see the percentage that, the percentage of calls that are specifically for short-term rentals versus residents, and to see if there's an increase there.
And that's one of the things that, as we move through and do the report in June, we're gonna do a deep dive into all of that data as well. We, I will tell you that every complaint that we get, and usually we get them on a Monday, right? They call us after the weekend, but Nicole follows up. Nicole's also been really good. Nicole, in summer, our administrative assistant. They mine the Airbnb and the VRBO sites to see what they're finding. We found people that were renting out an RV parked in a driveway in Park Forest as a separate unit. We found people that have put in separate units, which is against our zoning, and we follow up on all of those complaints to get people to understand what they can and cannot do.
Yeah. Okay. Specifically, if we do see an increase in calls, an increase in volume, is there any consideration of somewhat freezing the process?
So I think, and I don't wanna speak for the supervisors, but they set the policy, and when we did the ordinance, we said, "Let's give it a year and collect the data." Because one of the counters we heard, and our friends in Harris Township are hearing the same counters right now, is you don't know how many you have, you don't know the problems. Well, now we'll be able to say after a year, these are the concrete problems we're having, and we can go back. My friend is a manager of Gettysburg Borough. They banned them out of their residential zoning districts after originally allowing them in the residential zoning districts because they had so many issues. We can set limits on the number of nights per year. Everything is still on the table. And so I think we wanna gather the data though, so that we can concretely say, "These are the issues that we're having." And again, right now, it's been occupancy and parking have been the two biggest things that we're having, but these are the issues that we're having, and these are the proposed, you know, ways we can solve these issues, and let the supervisors make an informed decision.
Yeah, 'cause with 21 new applicants a month, that's what it was the last month. I mean, you're talking 240 a year if it, if the trend holds.
Right.
And so, you know, you could see almost a doubling of the number of short-term rentals just over that period of time that we're doing this deep dive into what we should do. So it's concerning, and I know I've already spoken about this, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, Amy, you can send me that information and the statistics.
Yeah, I will have Nicole work with the chief to pull the information on the calls that we've had, and then I can send that team out.
Okay, great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Supervisor Rob.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanna make sure you have the emergency number, police number. Please write that down. Please pass that on to your neighbors, because the more you get that information out, the more we can document that, the faster we can move on things. We thank you for coming in, but like I said, if you don't call in, we have no documentation. So Amy, if you don't mind, please give...
Yep.
Just say our emergency number, so it's on record.
Sure.
If you have a pen, please write it down, Amy.
It's 1-800-479-0050. That's the Center County dispatch number. Tell them you need a Patent Township police officer, and identify the address so they can call you back.
Yeah, and that actually rings right into the 911 center. It's just a non-emergency line, so we're not tying up a 911 line on that.
Yeah, I want to give that number again. It's 1-800-479-0050. We have been putting the information out on our social media on, right before the big game weekends. We'll put it out again. We'll also make sure that it's on our website as well. But again, call that number and tell them you need a Patent Township police officer and give them the address.
Is this just for weekends? Because what, the number that's on our website, the 2340273, is that...
That's during the week when we're open.
Yeah.
That's our main number.
So they could call that number also?
Yeah.
So you can go to the website, our Patent Township website, and there is a number on there for police department, which is not 911. So, anyway. But Amy just gave you the one for the weekend?
Yeah.
Any other supervisors? Supervisor Woodman?
Sorry, Ellie. I was gonna, does it help to have photos, for them to take photos to document?
It, so in order to assess the points, we have to have a violation that's filed either by Nicole, Center Region COG for trash issues, or the police. So it's helpful if you call, that's why it's helpful if you call in the moment, because the police will pull an incident number if they go out and there's a parking violation or whatnot. Sorry.
And quickly, what we don't want is your safety to be compromised, and so we're not advocating for y'all doing investigations or confronting individuals, and so we wanna keep your safety in mind, but that's why it's really important to, you know, call. I'll be right with you. Supervisor Abrams.
One concern would be that I'll have to see during this year and the next couple of years, how much extra work is being put on the police, and whether that means we need more staff and maybe another category of officer that handles a specific type of thing, because it's not the standard thing you might expect our police department to do. But I don't, could it take one or two people, three or four? I don't know, but it's a whole new thing for us, and so that is something we have to really look at over the next year. This is my last year on the board, but that's incredibly important.
Do you wanna...
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Have you received reports with the garbage collection on these units? What I've seen, the one next door and the one up the street and so on, they are not getting their garbage out on collection day. It will sit in their driveway, some of it in the recycling and so on, it'll be blowing into other people's properties, including ours, and it'll sit there for some time. So that's something, again, that I don't know if you can coordinate that somehow with the COG and so on.
Yeah, I can talk with Shelley Mato up at the COG. I know that's not just a concern in Patent Township, so that's something we'll probably need to address elsewhere as well.
Over.
Yeah.
Thanks for tolerating me.
It's not tolerating you. We work for you, so.
That's right.
Again, keep bringing those things to our attention. As Amy had said, you know, we are being methodical in our approach to this, because we wanna make sure that we're trying to get it right however best we can, get something right, but we wanna be intentional about what we're doing. And again, as much information as that we can have is gonna be helpful to making a determination that's gonna be in the best interest of, you know, our community. So, all right. If there's nothing else, moving forward then. Thank you so much for coming out. Item number three.
Before you go on, I forgot to let the chief make his announcement, so we need to make his quick announcement.
I was gonna do it later, but it's not a big deal. Just real quick, I wanted to mention, the night of our next meeting on October 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. right here at the Township Municipal Building, we are gonna be holding a license plate replacement event. So probably often, you're seeing vehicles where the license plate has been, is peeling or kind of blistered. A lot of the, apparently, I don't know if we had a bad batch in Pennsylvania, but a lot of them need to be replaced. So the law is, it has to be visible from 50 feet away. So we're working with Senator Langerholt's office to host this. He's gonna send some staff up. We're gonna have an officer there, 'cause there is a block that law enforcement has to fill out on the Pendott form to get a replacement plate set to you. But again, October 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00, if you have a plate that you think might need replaced, bring your vehicle in. We will take a look at the tag. If it does need replaced, we'll fill out the paperwork right here. The senator's staff is gonna take that paperwork and send it in on behalf of the folks that come in, and they should get their tag within seven to 10 days. A new tag to put on your car. So just wanted to mention that.
Want to get the new one, the liberty thing?
So, yeah, I'm not sure. That's a good question, 'cause I actually was thinking about that as well. I'm not sure which one. I imagine it's gonna be your blue and yellow one, so, sorry.
Can I get one that says my name?
Oh, you don't wanna do that. No. Supervisor Abrams.
Supervisor Abrams.
This is actually, I think, a problem that's been statewide, and it was brought up by the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission. That's a big loser of revenue for them, because if their camera systems can't take a picture that is legible, then you can't go after somebody, and they can that way escape paying tolls. So that's a big deal for them.
All right. Thank you, chief. Moving on, present, item number three, presentations, Public Works Facility Assessment.
So if the board remembers, last year, we contracted with Kimmel Bogret Architecture to complete a facility assessment for the Public Works Department up the hill. The department has grown its exist, outgrown its existing site, and so with our continued growth and the addition of more roads and potentially more staff in the future, we're gonna need additional space to accommodate staffing and equipment. So Kimmel Bogret spent the last better part of the year working with us to review our space needs and to explore possible off-site locations for Public Works location. At the end of the process, it was determined for a variety of reasons, one of the biggest ones being cost, that it's actually much more cost-effective to renovate our existing facility up the hill here. We have space that we can do that, rather than move into a virgin location, a new acquiring land. So we have Martin Kimmel, I think he's still on. I have to give him a little shout-out, because he's in the middle of having a very important anniversary party for his firm, and he's logged in remotely, and I think he's still on, but he's gonna talk about the work that was completed in the path board. If he's not on, I can kind of take it. We did include a copy in your agenda packet of the site plan that kind of shows how it can be renovated, and also the cost estimate for renovating the existing site, and then the cost estimate for moving forward into the design phase. It's about $5 million, which would have to be adjusted with inflation, again, when we actually get ready to do construction. Don't give me that face. We have some debt that will be retiring in 2028, so there's some, I've talked with our assistant township manager for finance about this. So we would like to move forward next year with going into doing just the schematic design, which we have a project in the CIP for that, will include money in the project, in the budget, so we can continue going on this project. I've already talked with Senator Langerholt's office about maybe looking for some grant funding to help offset some of these costs. So, Martin, I don't know if you're still on. I don't think that he is.
I think he is.
Okay. So I would just say that if you have...
No, no, I'm here. I'm here. I had trouble finding the mute button, and I was like in panic. I'm like, where's my unmute? So I am here, I'll put my camera back on.
Okay.
Here we go.
Thank you. So if you wanna briefly kind of touch on what we did, and then Larry, you could pull up the site plan for us and share that, that would be great.
Okay. Go now? Or... Okay. Go now, or wait?
Yeah, go ahead, Martin. Larry's pulling up.
Okay, great. Hey, so first of all, I just want to thank you all for having, Tyler's with me here today, and we worked with Amy and her team on this, to help you support the idea of how could you improve the conditions that you have to township. So thank you for the trust in doing that. As you pull up the video, our charge was to figure out the needs that you have physically, to compare them to the facilities that you have physically, and then to come up with kind of the delta, okay? I.e., we need less of this, more of that. Also, to look at the conditions of existing components that have been, you know, invested in long ago, and, you know, some are in various states of repair, or, you know, just they're aged. What we did as part of that, then, is looked at some test fits. Is it best to stay at the current campus site, or is it best to look outside of the current campus site as a way to facilitate it? Because things look pretty tight up there when you go. So we did some test fits, and we found that anywhere that we would go off-site, the total cost of the project would be likely more than double the cost of a project that stayed on the site. And then we double-checked to find out, could we in fact fit? And so the diagram you see in front of you today is an overlay of an aerial photograph of the existing public work facility with the balance of the municipal campus, you know, to the lower left. And we find that we can maintain the best of your facilities at the bottom, and then we can expand new facilities around the perimeter. We can just push them a little bit out to get more room in the middle, and you can't see my cursor, but hopefully you can see the edge of the buildings. You can see the, and you can see we're just pushed up to the setback lines, and get a really proper working service yard that is basically surrounded by the building, so you kind of almost don't even see the mess from anywhere, although you're on a site that's not that visible. So we believe that that is the best, most efficient project for you all to do in capital. And so, you know, Amy, if Amy has a question right there, I can pause, or I can just go on to just talk about, a little bit about cost.
Yeah, why don't we see if you have any questions on the kind of schematic he showed you, the site plan?
I just have a question about the slope of the lane. I'm sure you considered it, but I'm looking at, it's at the top of the, of the drawing here. So it's the, and the building is called heated vehicle bays. Is there a drop-off there, or an incline in any direction?
Yeah, there's a bit of a drop behind that building, and the idea is that we would hold the slab, of course, level and pitch properly back to the middle, and then the back wall of that building would sort of retain itself and go down the hill to reconcile that slope back to zero, which is a pretty efficient way to build, versus, say, a separate retaining wall that would just be retaining. We can use our building wall and the weight of it to retain the uphill herbs.
Okay. And just one last question. I'm seeing a dotted line towards the top of the printed page. Is that our property line?
Yeah, the top dotted line is the property line, and then the next dotted line down are the building setback lines.
Yep, for sure.
So you can see we stay within the setbacks.
Okay, thanks.
There.
Yep.
And obviously, if you were to at some point, say, I want a little more room, and you would consider giving yourself a little relief on setbacks, given the industrial nature of the area, you could do that, but we find that it fits within the setbacks fairly comfortably.
Yep, perfect. Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, do you want to go into the cost, Martin?
Sure. So what we do, we work for a lot of municipalities, and I don't know if Amy gave any lead-up, but no matter. But we keep, we keep cost data on hundreds of projects across the state and what they actually cost to build, including the dozens and dozens that we do ourselves. So we prepared a, basically a high-low, because obviously you can see it's just sketches, right, of cost estimating based on what we know and what we know of the market for buildings similar to this. And so we believe that for building construction, what you see there could be had for between 5.1 and 5.9 million dollars. You know, and again, it's high-low, because we don't have all the information. And what we mean by high-low is we're confident it will cost at least the low number, and unless there is some real wild card, we would not see any reason why it would ever cost higher than the high number. Then we also, we like to give you all-in numbers, because when you build a building or building facilities like these, construction is the overwhelming bulk of the cost, but you have other costs to make that building operate. You have furniture, fixtures, equipment, technology, security. So we carry numbers for that. And then you have soft costs, which are engineering approvals, architecture, testing, inspections, permits, and so on, depending on how you do, you know, you permit yourself there. And so we look at the sum total of those other costs is about another 700,000 to 900,000. So if you add the two numbers together quickly, you get like 5.7 or 5.8 to about 6.7 as the range. And the typical we experience is they usually come in in between the two. Every now and then you'll have conditions on a site that might drive it higher. Other times we have conditions in the market which will allow us to come in lower, but that's sort of the range. And so that is in like, if you started in 2026 construction, meaning if you, you know, if you were designing and you started construction mid-2026. If you were to say, okay, we're going to kick that out for however many, you know, weeks, months, years, you would just want to make sure you escalate that to match construction inflation. So I would always say average about 4% a year for this for every year after June of 2026, which is eight months out from now, start. So, and if you wanted us to bundle that up so you could keep track of that, I would, we'd be, you know, happy to do that. But that's, I think that's the main points, Amy, you wanted me to hit.
Yeah, I think that is too. Thank you. Any questions, concerns?
It's exciting. I think it's been needed.
No further questions or concerns?
So if you're okay with moving on to the schematic design, I would just ask you to make a motion to accept the design proposal. We've only included the money for that first phase, the schematic design, in the 2026 budget. Again, we have to look for some money for the rest of the design phase, but I think it's worth further continuation. We've had a very good relationship with Kimmel Bogret through this process. We've involved the crew leaders, the road crew leaders through this process as well, and the road crew, since it will be their facility, and they know best what they need.
All right. I'll entertain a motion first.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Kimmel.
All right. Hey, thanks to you all. We, and on behalf of Tyler and the team here, we will look forward to being in front of you again with more, hopefully, good information that can help you make the best decisions possible.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I was about to make a cheeky comment, but I'll let it go. Let's move on to item number B, proposed 2026 cog budget.
So we have Ben and Kimberly here from the cog to go over the summary budget, and you have copies of that, hopefully, at your places, most of you.
Thank you, everybody. It is great to see you all again. And I'm just going to make a couple short comments about the cog budget, and then would welcome any questions that you may have. Overall, we are looking at a 4.5% overall increase in municipal shares this year, which is well under the budget guidelines that were developed for this year's budget. A large part of the projected increase comes from healthcare costs, which is affecting everybody. Right now, we have a projected 13.6% increase in healthcare costs. We hope that comes in under that, but 13.6 is the last number that we had prior to moving into the budget process. As you all are aware from the last general forum meeting, there's also dental and vision insurance that will be coming on board. However, that does not affect 2026 shares. It will partially affect 2027 and will take full effect in 2028. However, during that time, cog staff will also be paying more towards their share as well, moving from 10% to 15%, and then to 20% on that side as well. One of the bigger changes this year is cog has begun moving some of the finance costs into our agencies and away from the admin budget. There has always been a certain fee that was pushed out. That was about $150,000. Because this was my first time through the full budget process, I asked where that number came from, and nobody knew. We eventually got down to, we think it was Becca and Joe's salary back when Becca was in the finance office as well. It was a combination of their salary that got spread out across the agencies. That is not a good way to do things, and, you know, we should be updating those kinds of numbers on a regular basis. So we made steps on that this year with taking more of the finance budget to go out across the agencies. This does not mean increased shares for the municipalities, just that the shares are not located within the admin budget. They are being spread out across the agencies. The hope is that we will eventually move to a system where the admin costs are spread out across the agency, so that you can see the true cost of every service that we offer. While it is a small piece, there is a small piece of me that goes into every program that the Parks Crew puts on, every bit of lawn mowing that happens, every emergency management response that happens. There's a tiny sliver of me in all of that, but that does not get accounted for in those budgets. We lump all of that just into admin. We do this because the Articles of Agreement say that the admin fees should be shared across the municipalities, and that is what the articles say, and so we have been following that. That was written at a time when Jim Steph was probably the only person in the admin office, and we have a much larger team now, so it is probably worth a discussion in the future about looking at new methods of spreading those costs out amongst the agencies to properly account for all the actions that influence the services that we offer. Next, I wanted to mention that for the first time since, I believe it's 2014, aquatics operations will require municipal shares. They have not been, you know, cost-positive for a number of years. However, there were some very good years that led to a fund balance being in those accounts, and that fund balance has taken care of the shortfalls for the last several years. That is no longer the case. We do not have enough in that fund balance to make up for those losses, and so there are shares attributed to this year's aquatics budget. However, because it has been so long since shares were needed there, there was not a mechanism in the budget document for accounting for municipal shares. Therefore, it shows up in the Parks Operating Fund, and then you will see a transfer out to aquatics. The formula would be the same, so it does not change what any municipality's shares would be, but so everybody can follow along with the budget properly, you will see an increase in Parks operating shares with a transfer out that goes over to aquatics to make, to take up for that shortfall. This is likely to persist moving forward. Most municipal pools need about $150,000 in contributions, separate from gate-entry fees, in order to maintain operations. We can have a longer discussion about that. It is a rather unscientific figure. However, I've been involved with a lot of pools in a lot of communities, and the number is very close to the same, no matter how big or small the pool and community are.
Was there a Bullman Dorman?
Uh, yeah. We had about a 1.4 million gallon swimming pool.
I seem to remember going there a few times.
I've described it this way. Dorman's Pool is the second largest in Pennsylvania. You can play a football game inside of the pool. It is, it is massive. And it takes about $150,000 per year to operate. Mount Lebanon's, our closest neighbor, has a small pool with, which much more resembles Welch Pool minus the splash pad, and they put in about $150,000 per year. One of our other neighbors was Green Tree, which had an even smaller pool and was restricted only to their residents, and they put in $150,000 per year. There is some science behind this, I'm sure, but I haven't taken the time to get there. But we can assume that we're going to have those costs moving forward in aquatics. I also wanted to mention that for code, the rental permit fee is expected to increase. I believe they're looking at about $5 on that. That'll be the first increase in a three-year period. We should have a good number of units coming on next year that will prevent the need for another increase over the next several years. However, there has been far fewer units coming on board in the last two years than there had been previously. This is also driven by the fact that we have higher costs than expected. We are expecting the cost now, but higher costs than normal for the existing structure side, because we are planning to bring in a new employee to shadow an existing employee for the next year. We have one employee expected to retire. She's the only person who does her job, and her job changes seasonally, so we would like somebody in there to shadow her and learn from her to transition into that role. And that was an item that the Finance Committee agreed with moving forward on. The other major item in code is that we will be working on and delivering a fleet management plan before next budget to cover all of the code vehicles. I know there has been considerable discussion over code vehicle purchases for years, so we will have a fleet management plan before the next budget takes place. And the last main budget item I wanted to point out is that Sklo Library is asking for a contribution of $21,500 from the municipalities, that's total, not individually, for a new roof for the library. They, yeah, the $21,500 roof would not be great, but they are getting substantial foundation funds and also working to bring in grant funding to cover the rest. We just want to illustrate how many efforts are being made to get funding from outside to minimize what the municipal contributions are for these kinds of projects when that is available to us. Overall, I believe the roof project is around half a million dollars, but of that, they're looking at $21,500 in shares, to complete that.
Was that related to the HVAC system thing?
That is a separate project.
And I think that's the original roof that's on that library.
Yes.
And it was put on in the early 2000s. That was when that was built.
Okay. I was mistaken. I thought that was all combined, so.
It's a combination of rubber roof through the center and shingle roof on the angles.
Okay. All right.
The only other thing I wanted to remind everybody of is that comments are due by 8:00 a.m. on October 16th. We have a very compressed timeline. That is the same day as the next Finance Committee meeting, so that they can refer the comments to exec to get General Forum to send them, send the budget out to the municipalities for adoption in November. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. And just to clarify, my look of scorn was just confusion, because I thought the roof was already, we had already approved all that.
What was it?
I said my look at you of scorn. It wasn't scorn. It was just confusion.
Okay. Yeah, the HVAC project is mostly completed. There's still just some small minor disagreements with the installer over some small additional work that was needed. I won't get into it here. There's a rather complex HVAC system, and that building looks to be very poorly designed internally, but nothing we can do about that now. This is for the roof itself, which is a separate project from the HVAC units.
Okay. I'm in support of a roof. Any questions from the board first, and then we'll take it to our Assistant Director. All right?
Manager.
Manager, Assistant Manager.
Assistant Township Manager for Finance and Administration.
Longest title in history. Longest title in history.
Supervisor Whitman.
Well, I was just gonna say, I was impressed that the, you know, the carryover fee, the fund balance. Sometimes I just can't get words out. I was really impressed that you worked on lowering that across. And I know we've had that conversation at a number of meetings. That was your intent. And also, just per the comments you made about distributing the finances across all the agencies, not in the administration. You know, just stepping in and rolling up your sleeves. And I talked to Kimberly about it before the meeting. Just really impressed. And I know you've heard this from a lot of people, but really, I want to thank you for putting that effort into this. And knowing that will really stand you in good stead for next, for years to come.
That is the hope.
That's it. Just kudos.
Thank you.
Our Assistant Manager of Finance and Sustainable Pools.
I want to thank Ben and Kimberly. I was, I was much more healthy this year after the budget. Because I didn't have all the heart palpitations I've had in the past. The budget, the budget process, I thought went great. I just wanted to give you that feedback in a public meeting that I liked the process where we looked at the budget with no changes in it and then added the things that we wanted to do. That made it, for me, a lot easier because then I could say, okay, if we do nothing, our municipal shares are going up X percent. So, if we add these things to it, it's gonna go up X plus those things. But it gives me a better idea. And it's, it's something I think worked out tremendous this year. As you could tell in the budget meetings, you didn't hear from me hardly at all because I didn't have any, any really complaints. The second thing is more for my board. Ben mentioned that the overall municipal shares are going up four point five percent. I just want to say that ours are going up three point seven five percent. So, ours are even going up that four point five percent. They're only going up to three point seven five. So, it's, it was an excellent job creating a budget. So, that, it, that is not a prob, a much more workable number, three point seven five, than at seven point seven five or eight point seven five or sixteen point seven five, which we have seen in the past. So, thank you again. Thanks.
Thank you.
Supervisor Abrams.
I would add to that, it's been, it's unusual to have such agreement and positivity about the budget at this time of year than we've had in the past. So, that's fantastic.
Thank you. It is much nicer to come to these meetings when you're not upsetting everyone in the room.
Yeah, he hasn't managed to make any of the managers mad this budget season, which is like a feat.
Well, Ben, I have to say, I'm glad our, our money is going to work with you. You're doing.
Thank you.
So, do you have any comments you want to send back to the Cog? I did write down Supervisor Whitman's comment about the fund balance, lowering the fund balance. Is there anything else you want to send back?
So, even if we were to merge all of our pools and get a Dormont, that pool is crazy.
Yeah. If you, if you haven't done so in the past, I would look it up on YouTube so that you get a full, like, sweeping view of it.
But it would still cost us the same with upkeep, even if we merged all of our pools.
The management, I mean, you don't want to upkeep a pool like that. That pool is over a hundred years old now. And it does not meet modern safety codes, but is grandfathered in. Your bathrooms, any facilities have to be at the shallow end of a pool. In case there's a fire, you don't want people running into the deep end. But because the pool is so old and so massive, it is grandfathered in. But if they do any major renovations to it, they have to flip the pool because the shallow end is at the far end. But it meets so many other modern design qualities, you know. Even being that old, it is a zero-entry pool. So, you know, it's a gradual slope down into it, which makes it very easy for all participants to be able to enjoy. Something for everybody. One of the great things is, you know, you can bring whatever flotation device you want. If you want to go out on a big floating pad, feel free. You're not gonna bother anybody. When COVID hit and everybody had to reduce pool capacity by fifty percent, we had never hit fifty percent before. So, it didn't affect the pool capacity at all. But, you know, I also knew it was a twenty-four thousand dollar water bill that was going to hit me. And then you have to, it was between two and five thousand gallons per week to top it off. And that's just evaporation, which means every time you watch somebody get out of the pool dripping wet and you're like, could you just get that out? Go, go back in. Wipe that off on there.
A little tinkle, tinkle. Supervisor Rob.
Ben, I just have a question on the Sklo Library share. Have you met with the other municipalities that they are in agreement to the twenty-one thousand five hundred?
I mean, that was unanimously approved by the Finance Committee. And until the full municipal votes go, we don't know. However, nobody has expressed any. I don't bring that up as a item of contention. That is there just to demonstrate that our agencies are looking for outside funding opportunities where possible so that you know that we are not just trying to take money from the municipalities. Where there are other buckets, we try to dip into those. As I expressed at the General Forum meeting, we are limited as Cog. The state only has, I believe it's four grants that Cogs are allowed to put in for. And, you know, at least two of those only came last year that we were put on those. The Parks Authority has been able to go for other grants because authorities have access to more grants than Cogs do. The Sklo Library Foundation can help apply for some other local money. And this would be foundation funds most likely that they are seeking. DCED just announced a new grant program for code agencies, and Cogs are not on them. It's one of the primary cog functions across the Commonwealth, and they do not allow us to apply for those grants. So, we don't have the same opportunities that the municipalities do. But where we do have those, that is just there to illustrate that, yes, we are seeking those funds.
I know Lisa has done an extraordinary job on finding funding. And just kudos to her as far as what she has done for Sklo Library. I'm just, I was just curious on, we support them, you know. And I can't speak for the other municipalities, but if we all are shared, that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah. There was, there were very few items of contention that made it into the end budget. There were a couple items that had some kind of amendments put onto them, such as the Marsh Boardwalk. It's a hundred thousand dollars. That is for, to help with seeding for grant funds. But that has the condition of completion of review and discussion at the General Forum level of alternatives to a boardwalk. So, you know, there are a few items that have conditions on them. But otherwise, anything that made it in generally had firm support.
Great. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Supervisor Whitman.
I just want to get philosophical for a minute. So, so to my eyes, a budget really reflects a community's set of values. And I guess it, I see new things about the budget every time I look at it. So, you might say, why didn't you see this before? But I haven't. So, I do note that overall cog and then each municipality pays about equal in the last two years for, for parks as well as for library. And I think that speaks very well for this organization or for this community. Just an observation. But I did want to question the grant money that Parks get and then that hopefully the library will get. That is reflected in the budget in terms of income, correct? But it's, that obviously is not passed on to the municipalities. We don't pay for that.
Correct. In some cases. So, you know, in the case of the library, that won't necessarily be shown as the expected income of half a million dollars in foundation funds because that will go through the Sklo Foundation, not through cog.
And that foundation money is not reflected anywhere in the budget?
That foundation is, yeah. Their money does not come to us generally. They spend their own dollars on that project, and then we contribute to that project.
So, we won't see the roof reflected in the budget?
So, you will not see the roof reflected in there. If it is for the Parks Authority, yes, that does flow through our budget because the authority does not have a budget of its own. A number of our budgets are what we call authority budgets. But they are an advisor on this. They do not have money of their own. So, they cannot dictate where those dollars get spent. So, everything from Parks flows through this budget.
So, these figures don't necessarily reflect how much money is actually being put into, for example, the library?
Correct.
It's a good estimate, so I just feel good about that.
And I will say, for Patent Township, your usage rates as a percentage level in the region stayed extremely consistent. The Active Adult Center was the only change that came close to even hitting a one percent change. And you dropped not quite one percent in your usage rate at the AAC. But everything else was very close.
Well, if there's nothing else, thank you for this presentation.
Thank you all very much.
I only have a few comments that we will make sure to get to you by October sixteenth.
At eight AM.
Eight AM.
The meeting is at eight thirty. We are giving, we are giving you as much time as we can.
I'll send them tomorrow.
Believe me, Amy was not happy over that deadline.
No, I was not. I was not. I wanted it to be later.
That one is beyond my controls.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you both.
So, the only comment I have from you guys is just on the fund balance, working to lower the fund balance. Is that correct? Is there anything else you want me to send back?
I mean, that pool was kinda...
Well, I'm not sending back a comment about that. That has nothing to do with the cog.
All right. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Is that a question? So, cog can apply for, well, they're very limited in applying for grants.
Yep.
If we apply for a grant, for like, could we apply for a grant for like the library?
We could apply probably for a grant for our share of the library.
Share of the library.
Yeah, the libraries, all those facilities are jointly owned, right? But I don't think we would be able to go out, I don't know, it depends on the grant. But I don't think we would necessarily be able to go out and apply for one grant on behalf of the library. I think we could apply for our part of it. We've never really explored that. I will say that this might be something, so Senator Langretholz's office typically tries to meet with us once a year or so. I haven't heard from them about this, but this might be something we might want to suggest because we have the cog. And he's, I mean, he was a Township Supervisor in Cambria County before he became a senator. But we might want to talk to him about maybe we should open up some more of these funding paths. Our cog is vastly different from every other cog in Pennsylvania. Every other cog in Pennsylvania is just seriously about sharing salt, sharing snowplow equipment. They don't do services like we do. They don't provide services. So, there probably needs to be something written in. And then the state needs to understand that they're gonna open it up to basically just our cog because our cog provides services, the others don't.
Okay. So, because the, the entity is jointly owned or shared, you couldn't apply for a grant? Like, if we solely owned or it was, if it was in our municipality?
So, it would depend on how the grant is set up. So, on Atherton Street, for example, we got money to do the signal timing from Patent Township through to Harris Township. And Patent Township actually took the lead on it, but applied on behalf of all the municipalities. And then we administered the grant itself and ran the project. So, but that was allowed as a multimodal, multi-municipal grant. So, we would have to look and see if it were allowed because we have this intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the cog. If somebody like, if Patent or Ferguson or the Borough or whoever would say, we'll take the lead and apply for this grant, the money comes to us, the cog, there would have to be an agreement, the cog would do the work. We would pay, you know, the bills out or whatever. But something we can talk about. But I do think the other piece is the state probably need, the legislature probably needs some education on what a council of governments can do. Because again, we're not the norm. We're completely different. My friends in the Pittsburgh area have a cog, and they were shocked when I told them what our cog does. They're like, we buy salt together. I'm like, yeah, we don't do that. We do building codes and parks and everything else. So, we probably need to do some education so the state understands that it's probably okay to let us apply for more grants.
That's a great idea.
And that would take years to move to the legislature.
So, maybe not. Like, if you work through, so for example, Supervisor Hacheski and I are on the Board of the Center County Association of Township Officials. So, if you work through an association like PSATs or PML and ask them to make a legislative resolution, and then they work with the Local Government Commission and put together a body of initiatives to try to get through in a certain term. Like, PSATs today just sent out an email that they're working on three different bills, and they were all legislative initiatives that came from the different counties in the state.
Okay.
So, I'm just saying, while Patent Township has the power in Cato.
Well, and I understand how those kind of grants work. I've been the lead on grants and bringing people together. So, it really depends on your funder. And it can, and sometimes it's a really big strength in your grant if you're saying, we are gonna work with this person and you have everybody's, you know, hearts in it. You're more likely to get funded, you know.
So, yeah, I mean, that'd be cool advocating for changing that funding structure or funding process, whatever, for like the cog. But I think on our end, if there are pathways that we can circumvent a bit and maybe get some funding. Because I know, again, twenty-one thousand dollars, for example, and our share is, you know, just a few thousand. I know that's a drop in the bucket, but any little...
Four to five.
Yeah. So, any, but any, any amount of money matters. And so, if we're able to, since we do have a good track record with, you know, getting these grants, if we can potentially do that, set up an agreement with the cog, then, I mean, that's less out of our, our taxpayers' pockets. And we can dictate a little bit how things go. All right. If there's nothing else, moving on to, oh, twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty Capital Improvement Plan.
Yes, I'll take this. So, hold on while I get the slides to start. So, every year at this time, we, we go through our Capital Improvement Plan. Our Capital Improvement Plan is going to look at any major projects that we want to do within the next five years. Anything that's out of the ordinary in our budget. Anything, any kind of operations we want to add to the, to services we want to add that are gonna cost us more. So, we, we do this to determine, not only can we fund them, but how So we, we do this to determine not only can we fund them, but how can we fund them over the next five years. So you have a copy of the report with your agenda and we'll go over some of the new projects that are in, in the CIP and how we're going to fund them. So first of all, as we talked about earlier today, the Public Works Facility Design is in there, the, the 2026, that should, 2026, not 2025, 2026 amount is $75,659. That's just for the schematic design. And in 2027 and 2028, the nearly $400,000 that we have for that, we're going to try to cover with a grant. Okay? The second new project is, is something that was brought up by the board to do a 10,000 per year fund for nonprofits, grants to nonprofits that will be at the Board of Supervisors' discretion as to how they want to spend that. The third project, new project is forestry management for the Seward property. This project is $10,000 in 2026 and it's to remove hazardous trees near the overlooked trails and the proposed parking area. Next is Burnell Road Park Phase Three. It doesn't begin until 2029. It's $110,000 in 2029 and $1,200,000 in 2030. 2029 is the, is the design and I guess you would call them the architectural drawings, the design phase. And then in 2030 is when we would be building the design, which will include two basketball courts, fitness equipment, an airport lounge area, a large pavilion, bench shell and connected pass. And the $1,200,000 is going to be covered by, we're hoping it's going to be covered by a grant. The Burnell Road Park Pump Track, we're going to seek grant funds in the amount of $130,000 in 2027 to pave the pump track. The next project is the Burnell Road Park Safety Surface Replacement. It's scheduled for 2028 for $225,000. The surface was originally installed in 2012. We've done some patching over the past couple of years, but the entire surface is failing, failing and needs to be replaced. Next project is the Circleville Road, Circleville Park Blocking Path Widening. That's $50,000 in 2028. The path is eight feet wide and will be widened by the additional four feet and become a shared use path connecting Circleville Road Shared Use Path with the Valley Vista Shared Use Path. The next project is for Public Works. It's purchase of some various softwares and it's $26,100 in 2026 and $24,685 per year from 2027 through 2030. And it's the purchase of Paver software, which I believe is for the road condition report, the iWork, the Deckard Technologies and our GIS software, I think ASRI. GIS, GIS software for the Public Works Department.
And the Deckard Technologies is the short-term rental software that we discussed earlier.
Okay. Yeah. Is iWork the, the replace facility to? Okay. That would be a worker, work order system to keep track of our costs. The final one is the radio replacement for Public Works. It's $33,439 in 2026. And the Public Works Department radios pretty much have reached the end of their useful life. So I mentioned during some of these with the ways we are going to pay for some of them by, by grants, the other, it's going to have to come out of the general fund. As we talked about last year, we put a one mil increase in 2025's budget and our plan was that we were going to increase it by another mil in 2026, which would bring us up to 11.9 total mils. Maintain that 11.9 through 2027 and then start bringing the, as we reach the, the fund balance level that we're comfortable with, to start bringing the real estate tax rates back down again in 2028 through 2030. So just to recap, 2026 has an 11.9, 2027 is 11.9, 2028 drops it down to 10.9, 2029 drops it down to 9.9 and then 2030 takes us back to the 9.5 we were before we started moving up.
So that's different from what's posted up there, right? You read?
No.
Nine point?
He's adding the 9.3.
9.3 plus point six is 9.9.
Sorry. Thank you for that.
I'm not very good at math, but I think it's 9.9.
Neither am I. You're, you're, thank you. Oh, my God.
The projected here and cash balance as a percentage of expenditures, if you remember, we kind of want to be between eight and 12%. It looks like we're going to be a little bit high at 2025, come back down to the 12% in 2026. I prefer, to be honest with you, to be around 17%. That gives us a couple of months of, we should have three months of fund balance to get us from January 1st to April, I mean, to March, to end of, end of March, when we get, start getting money in from taxes. Because if you think about it, 50% of our income all comes in between March 1st and April 30th. So that's, 50% of our cash comes in at that time. So we have to kind of work with that. So this basically keeps us around this 12 to 17%. And then, any questions or comments? That's, that's the CIP report. And you'll see all those projects that are in the CIP report on the budget when I, when I present the budget in November.
Would you be, would you give me even more of a discount if I paid my taxes like right now?
For next year?
Next year.
Can't do that.
I wish I could.
I'm just trying to put some money in your pocket, your fund balance.
We're not allowed.
Okay.
My tax specialist would be very upset with me if I took it before we even invoiced it, before we filled it. She already is mad at me most days. It's like, it's like being at home.
Any questions, comments from the board? Supervisor Whitman?
If no one else has any. A simple question. What is a park safety surface?
Oh, that's the place, the surface that's out there now.
What, what is it? Is it the stuff that's underneath?
It's like the, isn't it rubberized?
Oh, it's underneath the play equipment?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's like play ball surface.
Yeah, okay. I never heard it called...
It's like the rubberized surface.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, yeah.
So the kids, when they fall, they don't care.
Yeah. Or wood, yeah, we used to have woodchaps, but now it's the, okay, it's sort of bouncy material. Okay, great. So are you...
Tough like we were when we were kids.
Right. Or the neighbors that had stones underneath their swing sets?
That's, that's exactly right.
Or asphalt.
Having these big monkey bars, as we call them, stones underneath.
Drop an egg on it or something. It's got acid test.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we had seesaws too. I love them. Those are the best. But anyway, so what's about grant availability? Are you concerned about that with sort of government shutdown and then this standstill in here or yada, yada, yada? Are the grants, more foundational grants or they usually governmental grants?
So we typically go for a lot of state grants. So the state grants, like we're waiting right now, we have in to buy a police car, police radios and public works radios. So we typically should be hearing about that the end of this month. I don't know what the state budget kind of disarray in the shutdown, if they're going to actually say, we're getting the grants, we're not getting the grants, is kind of what they're going to do.
Okay.
So, and we don't typically apply for that much federal funding. We are applying for some federal funding for the Viro Boulevard project, but those are grants that are still readily available.
Okay, great, great. Just checking. And then, so I had brought this up, the, the issue of a township sign. It's actually a wooden sign that's out on, I guess, is it, what's the name of that road right outside?
Green Tech?
What?
Green Tech Drive, the one right here?
Well, no, the one that's between, no, the one that's between Patent Township and Home Depot.
Green Tech Drive.
Green Tech.
Is that called? No, that's, no, I'm talking about the one that's visible actually.
Oh, Valley Vista?
Thank you. I couldn't think of that. It's right on my...
1600 Pennsylvania Avenue.
All in there.
Yeah. So I, I personally would love to see a sign there. When you drive near Ferguson, you can see there a nice sign near the building. People, I mean, people who need to get here know how to find it, but people who don't, don't have any idea...
We actually have a project in, in 2027 to put in a township sign.
Is it, is it going to be for Valley Vista?
So this was one that was left over from Doug and my understanding was we were going to redo the logo. We haven't done that yet. And then we were going to get, and we could get pretty township signs then if we wanted to.
Okay.
I was going to ask about that. Where are we at with the branding?
That we could put, I mean, then we could put, we could figure out where we want to put it.
Yeah. I would just love to have something out of Valley Vista.
Yeah.
So that the whole world knows.
Ferguson and College did that years ago.
College, yes, exactly.
Now, I don't have the best track record. We did this in Harrison. Those signs are probably still sitting in their maintenance, should have not put out. So I'll make sure they get put out here.
Okay. I, I thought we had discussed it and I think I might have talked to Doug about it at one point.
Yes. And we need to do the logo contest. That is like on my agenda for next year.
Yeah, okay.
Because I think that's a great way to involve students in the community and also residents of the community to see what they come up with.
Great. Yeah, I think that'd be, that's just great for the image of the township.
All right, yeah, let's make it happen.
We'll do it.
Super, super. Thank you.
Nothing else from people? All right.
Can I ask something right here, right now? So I just, it has to do with the technicality of the hearing system. So I do have these magic, I call them ears, but I think they're called hearing aids. When you speak into the mic, I can actually, I can now hear it in my hearing aid and I could hear...
We have the loop system.
But if my, to my fellow board members, if you could speak into the mic, it's, it's amazing. I really appreciate it. Because like Sujan's like, he's talking right here. Thank you so much. I can understand every word.
Yeah, that's great. I'm glad you...
Why is whispering in the mic?
Little ASMR stuff.
Oh, I heard that. There you go.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for my, break is over.
All right. If there's nothing else, I don't think we have any more comments. It all looks good.
It's good.
All right. We'll move on. Fall road report.
Yeah, this one's me. So twice a year, historically twice a year, we have inspected our roads, spring and fall. This year, we've only inspected it. Can you hear me now, Tim?
Did you just hear? Buh-buh-buh-buh-buh?
Yeah, I hear you.
I heard it in my ear. I can, but if you spoke like this, I could hear you even better.
Is that better?
A little better.
So historically, we've inspected the roads twice a year?
Thank you. Perfect. Thanks.
You're welcome. This year, we've only inspected them once and that was in the spring due to Glenn, who's performed the inspection historically, retiring here in September. So due to time, we only, we didn't get that one. We only got the one in the spring. So our data is based off of this spring inspection, okay? So the township, we maintain 60.43 miles of roadway. And then this graph, this chart, it shows what our road condition index is at our existing inspection guidelines, our criteria, okay? And I'll touch base on that here shortly. So just reviewing the pie chart, the chart goes from excellent to poor, all right? So excellent, that would be the dark blue, okay? That's 15%. Very good is 34% of our roads are very good. Good is 21%, fair is 28% and poor is 2% making up 100% of our roadways or 60.43 miles, okay? Our current system, we use, the criteria that we use, we do a boots-on-the-ground inspection. We go out, we inspect every foot, every lane mile of our roads and it's very inspector biased, I'll say. And then we, we perform that, we give it a number and that number goes into a spreadsheet. And then in the spreadsheet, it weights the road ADT, average daily traffic, or the volume of the road, higher. So roads like Valley Vista and Viro and all of those, those would get higher, they're, they're heavier weighted, so that number would go up, okay? So if you have two roads that are the same, that look the same in the field, at the long, the, the lower volume road would be a low number and the higher volume would be a high number. So we're weighting them based on usage, okay? The way the, the current system is. And then from that, it provides an overlay rating, which is a number from zero to 100. Zero means that it's a new road, okay? If it's 100, it means that the road needs to be tore out and redone, okay? So let's just think of it like 100 would be the amount of work to put into the road or the percentage of the road that's bad, okay? This, this way we've been doing it since the 1980s, all right? Actually from a former Patent Township Art Works Director. I'm proposing the use of Paver in 2026, which is a Department of Defense software, Payment Management Index criteria, which assigns PCI, Payment Condition Index, to it. Similar, it'll give us a number similar to what we have now, but it's more scientific, okay? So it's an ASTM standard. It's supported by the industry and anybody that does a payment inspection references and uses the Paver rating. The Corps of Engineers is the Department of Defense. They've since sold it to the University of Colorado, who, who now manages it as of this year. But I'm, I'm very familiar with it. Other nearby municipalities also use that software as well. And it takes the, the bias out of the inspection, okay? In, in Paver, it also, you can look at a history or more technical curves to see the lifestyle and it's more scientific to when you should do an overlay or a milling overlay or a micro or whatever, you know, repair that you want to do or do nothing, okay? And if, you can set certain guidelines that helps myself kind of budget to when a good time to, to do a certain treatment on a road is by using the system. Because you can input a certain monetary value into the system and you say, I have a million dollars. And it could tell you how to use that million over the life cycle of, of your network. So it's really a great system, okay? It's pretty powerful. And it gives you guys backing to why I want to change or mill that road and I don't want to do that one, okay? So it provides that feedback. Okay. So that's that. So now I'm going to give you an update of our current paving projects. So now I'm gonna give you an update of our current, um, paving projects for twenty twenty-five.
So I, I would imagine then the, um, in an ongoing fashion, then it's less person power going out and looking at every single road.
So you still have to perform the inspection.
Okay.
So, so that you do. It's still boots on the ground, um, but it's more scientific. So for example, let's take a road that's, uh, six miles long, okay? Each road, depending on the length and depending how many sections there are, you split it up into, um, samples. They call it samples in Paver, okay? So you, you take a road that's X distance long, and then you do so many samples across that. Those samples are usually on a twenty-four foot road or a hundred foot long, okay? And in that sample, you literally measure with a wheel, longitudinal cracking, transverse cracking, alligator cracking, block cracking, whatever the distress is, okay? And you put all of this into this, into the software. Um, and it's not like if I do it, the inspection, or Larry does the inspection, or you, it's the same number, which is what's so great about it. Uh, it's very consistent because it uses the science and your measuring items instead of just your observations of mine as, um, me or a finance director or a manager, we'd all have very separate, different, you know, conditions. So, um, it, it normalizes everything, okay?
Got it, thank you.
Yep. The interval on that isn't. Yes.
Is it worth it to convert some of the old data into the new system, or should you just throw away the old system because it's so different and not wasting time, more time?
So I'm not gonna throw away the data. I like data. Once you have data, it's hard to get rid of it. We keep it because you can always use it. So how I'm gonna use it the first year is to take something that we've had, and, and we've used this since the seventies. So it, we've used it, we've trusted it. I'm new here, right? So I kind of trust it, but I wanna, um, I wanna proof it. I wanna make sure that the way that we're doing it makes sense. I'm gonna say that there's going to be adjustments from what roads that we're, we have planned now to what they are for next year or even five years in, in the plan here, okay? So, um, w- we'll see what that, that difference is between the way that we're doing it now and the way that we're proposing to do it with Paver. Does that answer your question?
It does. I, the new way sounds better to me than the old way, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, um, it should be more scientific. Okay? Um, so our twenty twenty-five current projects, I'll review those. So we have our paving projects. Uh, we're paving North Oak Lane and Christopher Lane. Christopher Lane has been, um, milled and provided the scratch, and then Township Public Works crews, along with a gentleman from Imron, we installed the curb. If you haven't seen it, it looks great. Uh, we did that in-house, uh, saved quite a bit of money by doing that, and it looks really good. So kudos to our guys for, for doing that, um, in the way that it looks. Um, we started, uh, last week, uh, Monday. Uh, we milled off North Oak Lane. Uh, we milled it off and scratched it, so it's just a thin layer of asphalt. It smoothes it out, makes it a nice ride quality. Um, and then, uh, starting tomorrow, we're gonna be installing the curb on the western side of North Oak Lane. Pretty excited about it. It's gonna look great.
I could tell.
So we got that. Uh, we did stormwater improvements as well on North Oak Lane, um, where we, we added two inlets, uh, replaced the, the inlet tops, um, brought all of the grates up to standards for bike safe grates, things like that. Uh, it's, it's turned out to be a really good project this year. Hall Bakers doing, they're the contractor, they're doing a great job so far, uh, and they're working very well with, with us. So that'll be wrapping up. So we'll, um, finish the curb up next week, and we'll put the top on North Oak and Christopher Lane the week of the twentieth. Okay, weather dependent, don't, don't hold me to it. Uh, there's a little bit of fluff there, but by the end of the month, it should be complete, okay? Uh, we've performed a lot of outreach to the residents along North Oak as well, just to let them know that there will be about ten days, uh, five to ten days, that they're not gonna be able to get into their driveway, uh, because we have curb cuts and things like that, that we're, we're putting a new curb. So you can't drive over that new curb until the concrete sets up. So we're doing that outreach as well. And I spoke, spoke to individuals as I'm doing the door hangers and answering questions, so, uh, it's going well. We're communicating that with them as well. That's it for that. Microsurfacing, so this year, we, uh, we, we microsurfaced. Uh, twenty eighteen, uh, we piggybacked with Ferguson Township to do, uh, to microsurface Viro Boulevard from North Atherton to Waddle. That was the first year that we've ever done that. I was actually involved in that with Glenn, uh, when I worked at Ferguson, um, just cause it was new here. Uh, it still looks really great to date. When I went out and looked at it, and it's holding up very well. So, um, last year and this year, we microsurfaced Circleville Road, uh, from Scotia, uh, to Circleville Wetlands, and last year, and then this year was Circleville Wetlands to just in front of the park, on Circleville Park. Uh, it turned out, you know, really nice. Um, we did repaint those lines as well, uh, to bring those back to standards. We're gonna continue to use microsurfacing in the future. There's a, a write-up of what micro is. If you have questions, please let me know, I, I can address them, but, um, I'm not gonna reiterate what it is. Okay, so I'm gonna run into the CIP roads for twenty-six through twenty, twenty-thirty. Like I said, um, twenty, twenty-six roads do include the way that we're, uh, inspecting and laying out roads to, as candidates for, um, whatever treatment, milling overlay or micro. Uh, but these are subject to, to change, and I would inspect them, expect them to change in twenty twenty-seven through the, the future. So, uh, I'll give you an overview of each road, and then also the overlay rating that we currently have on file per our inspections with, with the current, okay? It'll kind of give you an idea why we're overlaying it now and not waiting, okay? Uh, and again, uh, the higher the number, the, the worse the road is, okay? So twenty twenty-six, East Hillside Ave, uh, we're gonna be milling an overlay in from Fairwood Lane to Douglas Drive. Uh, that overlay rating is a number seventy-three. Uh, it's actually made up of two segments of roadway. You have the, the main line road itself, and then you have, we call it the circle on East Hillside. Um, the circle is a sixty-four. Uh, it, it's definitely a good candidate for a milling overlay, in my opinion. So I would agree with that. Valley Vista Drive, uh, milling overlay from North Atherton Street to Carnegie Drive, that's a sixty-six. Circleville Road, milling overlay or microsurfacing, um, those limits to be, you know, TBD. Uh, those overlay ratings are forty-five, sixty-two, and sixty-five. Uh, those limits are TBD because, um, the roadway itself, from the park to the woods, if you're going, um, south, uh, isn't that bad. It's a good candidate for a micro. But once you get into the, to the woods, it really, you can see it, the pavement more distressed. Uh, it's just, it's a good candidate, in my opinion, for milling overlay. Um, so we'll see what funds, um, that we get, that I get for, to perform this, and then we'll adjust those roads, that limits accordingly. Twenty twenty-seven, Viro Boulevard, uh, milling overlay from North Atherton to Waddle. Uh, that section of roadway is a sixty-nine. And then Circleville Road, uh, we might do a micro or a milling overlay. And again, it, those limits are TBD. Uh, and those limits on Circleville Road, anytime that I'm saying Circleville Road over the next three years, it's from the park to our township line. It, it's, it's in need of, of some help. Uh, twenty twenty-eight, West Gate Drive, uh, milling overlay, uh, North Oak Lane to Briarwood Lane, that's a seventy-nine. Grayswood Boulevard, uh, micro, uh, from Meeks Lane to Scotia. So that isn't that old, uh, and when we install a road, um, historically, about seven to eight years after you pave a road, you should micro it. It just, it adds to the longevity of that road. And it, it really lengthens that road from thirty, thirty-five years to out further. Twenty twenty-nine, uh, we have Rose Drive, Saddle Rock, uh, milling overlay from Route five fifty to Piccadilly Road, sixty-three. Uh, Briarwood Lane, milling overlay from West Gate Drive to Highland Drive, that's a nine, um, which is basically a, a new road. I didn't, I, I, that's just a carryover from last year. But yeah, a nine, I didn't actually look at it, cause I think it's gonna change. Um, that would be a great candidate probably for a microsurfacing. Uh, but again, we'll, we'll look at that in the future years. Uh, Julian Pike, uh, micro, uh, from five fif- Route five fifty to Kingston Ridge, um, and that section of road is a fifty-four and a sixty-eight. And then twenty thirty, Gainer Drive, milling overlay, um, and those limits TBD, uh, forty-three, fifty-three, and seventy-six. And Top Trees, uh, not, nothing, but last, um, we would just kind of do the micro on the sections that we, uh, we paved in twenty twenty-three. It would be that time, seven, about seven years after, seven years, um, to micro. Okay? That's, that's all of my report. Do you guys have any questions or concerns or comments?
Oh, thank you for that. But I must say, I was on North Oak Lane this weekend, and also doing some door hanging. But I did talk to a number of people who asked about the road. It's all, and they, all the mailboxes have temporary holding things, and they were explaining to me, and they were so excited about it. So it, it's great when you get that feedback from people, and then, you know, it's happening in here, so congratulations. They're, they're so excited that their part of Oak, North Oak Lane's gonna look like the part, um, on the other side of Douglas Drive.
It's gonna look better.
It'll look, oh, I'll tell them that. That's so great.
Any other questions, comments? This is great. I'm, I'm glad with, about the, um, I don't wanna say innovation, but like getting updated on what we do and how we assess things, and, um, and so I'm excited to see what this new program, software, whatever, how that helps us. Yeah, do the work better. This is a callback to getting back to Circleville. Wasn't there a plan to extend, uh, that, um, path over to Grays?
Scotia, yeah, that's still in the process.
Okay.
We've been working on getting some easements from the property owners. We've worked that out. We're kind of at the last stage of it. Susan Wheeler's been working on that, so that, then we can hopefully get the design work done and then go to construction. So that is all being still moving.
Okay, so we decided to go left then, as opposed to going, wrapping around and going, okay? All right, that's all.
It's exciting, yeah.
All right, well, there's nothing else. Uh, there's no items on items four through nine.
Larry has something he'd like to update you on with the SPPA.
He hasn't got to the, you're jumping ahead, the poor guy.
Skip you.
Are you ready for committee reports? Cause I would like to, uh, space going committee reports. Chair.
Anyway, item number ten. Committee reports. Anything the board wants to talk about first. All right, go ahead, Larry.
Okay, so, um, I just wanted to quickly discuss the, um, Center County Solar Group met this morning. It was our first ever meeting, and we received an update from Prospect fourteen, who is the developer of the solar array, and, um, uh, Greensky, who is our, our consultant. Prospect fourteen tells us that they are on schedule to build the solar array. They're expecting that they're gonna start construction of it within the next three to four months. Have it done by, um, the end of twenty twenty-six, early twenty twenty-seven. There's a lot of, uh, you know, noise that, that's around about, um, the one big beautiful bill. As you might know, uh, sunsets some of the, uh, solar tax credits. And, and of course, it's my belief that the, that the project's gonna be harder to make money, uh, harder to, to generate a profit for Prospect fourteen without the tax credits. But the tax credits don't sunset until after twenty twenty-seven, so if they can get it up and running during twenty twenty-seven, they'll still receive those tax credits. They're, they're working on some other, they're working cr- right now on, um, acquiring the financing for the project. So that's where Prospect fourteen is, and, um, our consultant is, is regularly speaking with them on the project, but I just wanna say that for anybody that might hear something different, that the Prospect fourteen says the project is on schedule to, to be completed and up and running by the end of twenty twenty-six, early twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, uh, so for future reference, can we just call it the most recent bill? Most recent bill. I don't need to hear a big beautiful bill.
Okay. Well, I have other names for it, but.
Okay. Most recent bill. I am surprised, though, that y'all have just now met as a group.
Um, yeah, we were waiting for, um, Prospect fourteen to be ready to give us an update of where they stand. Um, so I, I, I did forget to mention their, all their permitting is done. They're basically at the point where they're acquiring financing so they can buy the, the raw material, the, the solar panels and the, and the, you know, mechanical that they need to build the, the project. So we were waiting for them to be ready to, to, to give us an update, cause I think a lot of things were in, in the works. They were waiting for, um, some, uh, clarification on the latest bill, um, that came out of Congress.
Thank you.
So, so until they got some of that, they weren't sure whether they could meet some safe harbors. There was a lot of, you know, it, it, a, a lot of in the industry discussion today, but, but they have to hit certain, um, targets to be able to, uh, get the tax credits to get certain things, um, through the federal government. So they weren't sure what the final, um, uh, requirements were that, were gonna be, and it's my understanding, they just came up with the, with the guidelines sometime two weeks ago, early last week. So he was ready to give us an update. So we had not met before that.
Got it. Uh, any comments from the board?
Are we gonna talk about the rep versus the alternate?
I will put that on your agenda for the twenty seconds, and we'll get that ironed out.
Perfect.
Yeah, the, the, the Center County Solar Group has Betsy as the representative and me as the alternate, and I think our original discussion was the other way around, but Betsy and I would like it the other way around.
Yes, Betsy would really.
That I would be the voting member, and she would be my alternate if I can't make it.
Larry, Larry really knows his stuff, and I'm, I'm just an enthusiast, so I feel always defer to Larry.
It's much easier for me, cause I was involved not only in all the solar.
Yeah.
Power purchase agreement meetings, going back to the very first one.
But I also, also involved in all the project management team meetings. But I also, also involved in all the project management team meetings.
Yeah, and, and at this point, it's largely financial and economic.
Yeah.
Which is sort of out of my will house.
Do we have to advertise that, or can we not just?
No, we can just put it on the, we just. Well, I just.
I think we have to put it on the agenda.
We have to put it on the posted agenda, because it's an act.
Yes, it has to be on the posted agenda. Since we found out about it this morning, um, it was too late to put it in the posted agenda.
Yeah, so we'll take care of it on the 22nd.
Got it.
We've got plenty of time. We're not going to be meeting between now and two weeks from today.
Yeah. And, and Larry essentially does all the thinking and talking, anyway, so I.
With our new building project up here, why not just put the solar, solar array up here?
I think we'll probably discuss that when the time comes.
Put solar up there, yeah?
And I think we need solar suits, so we can.
You're not getting a solar suit.
Ourselves generate.
You're not getting a badge, and you're not getting a solar suit. I'm drawing the line. We're having a costume contest here on the 31st. The staff, last year, we did it by department, this year, we're doing it individual.
And who judges? Do you need some judges?
The people that don't participate judge.
Okay.
And no one likes my costume, because no one really knows who my costume is.
Great.
Because people around here are too young to appreciate what my costume will be.
I'm going as Bad Bunny.
Tyler, did he take you? I did.
I mean, last year, Graff won, like, he usually wins, so.
Yeah, Graff wins.
Who does? Graff, the dog.
Bad Bunny. Isn't he Puerto Rican?
Yeah.
He's not American, though, right?
Yeah, that's what I hear. That's what I hear.
Okay, I don't need the president sending troops to Patent Township.
Okay. CNET, do your job, X that out. Put like a mute.
Edit that out.
I'm just only communicating what I've heard. Okay. I should stop. Okay.
How about we adjourn?
All right, adjourn. Uh, I will, uh, any other business? I'll take our motion.
To adjourn.
That's a weird thing.